I wanted to see what it was like and it was so fun. It was amazing. We laughed a lot. We smelled really bad. Yeah. Um, it was so great. It's wonderful. And I'd never ran in a 5K or anything before, so I just... It was a good first experience for sure. Not average, but good. Very good.
Would you do it again?
Oh, in a heartbeat. I hope they really have some more in plan. They said they were planning one for the spring. I'd be back in a heartbeat.
We just finished our first 5K op-
It's seven o'clock, so we'll call this meeting on September 4th to order. The first thing we're gonna do is our invocation. We have Pastor Stanley Kelly here from the Fellowship Baptist Church, and he's gonna help us with leads and invocations, and then we'll do our pledge of flag. Pastor Kelly?
Thank you for doing this.
Our Father, we come to you this evening thanking you for all your mercy and grace that you've bestowed upon us in our lives. Lord, we also come to you to recognize in your supremacy over all the earth, over creation, and over our lives. Lord, we submit ourselves to you the best way we know how today. And God, we also thank you for this great city of Goldsboro that you allow us to live in and to do our business with. Thank you for these men that are here represented on the council and the ladies also that assist them in providing for our city and making wonderful decisions. More thank you for the improvements that have been made to this city that we live in and the surrounding areas. And I pray, God, that you would continue to give them wisdom and guidance, direction, as they make those decisions in days in near future. And, Lord, I also pray for us as citizens of this place that you would help us to cooperate and to recognize authority and respect it and to do the best we can to live together in harmony with one another. God, help us. As our prayer, in Jesus' name we ask it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the river by which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle that the Constitution teaches us for all.
You may be seated. Next, we have roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
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 Here. We did get an email from Councilmember Foster today letting us know that he was gonna be out tonight for... He had a business meeting, so that's why he's not present tonight. Next, we have presentations, and our first one is a resolution in memory of Harold Everett, William Harold Everett. And I'm gonna read this, and I'm gonna get Mr. Everett's wife, and maybe his daughter will come up and actually get it. But let me read it real quick, because I have to have my glasses to read it, so I can't come out there and do all that. Whereas William Harold Everett was born on December 25th, 1934, and was raised in Williamson, North Carolina. From 1964 until his death on August 16th, 2018, Harold resided in Goldsboro, North Carolina. Harold is survived by his wife Lila and his daughters Lucy and Anne. He was blessed with three grandchildren, Adley, Xavier, and Lila Francis. He is also survived by one sister, one brother, and many nieces and nephews. He served his country in the United States Army between undergraduate and law school. He began practicing law in 1962 in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, moved to Goldsboro, North Carolina in 1964, where he practiced law until 2015, including the city attorney for the city of Goldsboro for more than 35 years. Whereas Harold has served our community, our church, in many ways, including senior warding and treasurer of St. Stevens Episcopal Church, president of the Goldsboro Chamber of Commerce, president of the Paul Harris Scholar Rotary, and member of the Goldsboro City Schools Board of Education. Harold also served as chairman of the Wayne Mental Health Board, president of the local Wachovia Bank Board, and member of the North Carolina Development Investment Grant, known as the J-Did Committee. Therefore, it is resolved by the mayor of the city council of the city of Goldsboro that, number one, we express to the family of William Harold Everett our heartfelt belief that the memory of his good works and character will be and remain an inspiration to many and a blessing to all. This resolution shall be incorporated to the official events of the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect this and after the 4th day of September 2018. All for this for adoption.
Move to adopt.
Second. Any discussion? All if everybody's right hand. Ron, before I get Mr. Everett, I know you are a partner of Harold's. Do you have anything you want to say?
I'll say that he set the bar very high. He set the bar very high for everybody in the office, and I enjoyed working with Harold for many years. We miss having him in the office. We were fortunate enough that, even over the last few months, he would stop by, although he was not practicing law any longer, even if he stayed for just 15 minutes. It was nice to have him visit with each of us, and I tell you, he taught us all integrity and to work hard. And I appreciate that.
All right. Ms. Thor, will you come up and let me present this to y'all?
As I come down, I do want to tell you, being on the council, I knew Mr. Everett for many, many years, plus with the church and his family and all that, and they say behind every man is a good woman. And when she called, you get, you listen. If she called, you would think you had to do something, or something was fixing to happen. But Harold was a great person. We did a lot of work with him here at the city, and he did a lot for the city. His only flaw that I know of, and you know I'm gonna say this because I have to, is he likes Carolina and he loves Carolina. I'm gonna mistake, I just can't do that. But let me... But we have to get a picture of this, hold on. I got my own personal picture of the law school. So, um, let's do this. Now, you got a smile.
I'm trying.
Where's she's getting it?
Now, Lila, you're gonna be on Facebook.
You're gonna be on Facebook. Y'all wait a while. I'm waving the camera. Anything we can do here last night? We do appreciate all the service.
I do understand. He loved the city. And I know he drove people crazy. Bless you, Joe, Jimmy, bless Louis.
I never said anything about that.
But I... But he just wanted it right, and y'all did it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the next one is, we have a resolution... I almost don't want to even read this, but I feel like I have to. We have a resolution, special appreciation for service rendered by Scott A.C., as the city manager of the city of Goldsboro for more than seven years. So Scott, I'm gonna read this before you have to go down there and smile.
Correct.
All right. Scott Stevens retires on October 1, 2018, as city manager for the city of Goldsboro for more than 29 years of credible service. Scott served his country faithfully as a reserve officer in the Navy Civil Engineer Corps from 1993 until 2001. Scott began his career in public service for the North Carolina Department of Transportation in 1990. Scott transitioned from state to local government in 1998 with the city of Kinston, where he served as assistant city engineer, city engineer, public service director, assistant city manager, and city manager. On August 8, 2011, Scott was hired as the city manager for the city of Goldsboro, where he has served for seven years until his retirement this September. Scott has participated in numerous local boards, commissions, and civic activities, including the Wayne County United Way, Wayne County Chamber of Commerce, the Exchange Club of Goldsboro, and the Goldsboro Quanis Club, to name a few. Scott has represented the city of Goldsboro on various boards and commissions, including the North Carolina Building Codes Council, the North Carolina Water Treatment Operator Certification Board, and the Electric Cities Board of Directors. Scott has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his coworkers, colleagues, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro of expressing to Scott their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over these years. Therefore, it is resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro that, number one, we express to Scott our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the city of Goldsboro and offers Scott our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated officially in the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect from and after this the 4th day of September 2018. All for this for adoption.
Move to second.
Any discussion? All if everybody raises right hand. Resolution is adopted. You know the deal.
So I will say that really, ever since I was part of the team that hired Scott, and Scott, being, having an engineering background, a very professional background, I've learned, I'm like a type A personality. He's got some type A in, but it's always with a maybe, or let me think about it, or can we talk about it a little bit later? It's never a... So he... The engineering comes out a lot, but he's done a lot of really good things for the city. He's represented very well here now all the time. Whatever that city is in Virginia is gonna get quite an asset, and we're gonna miss you, and we truly, truly appreciate everything you have done. I'm gonna let you talk too.
Well, right.
I know you'll want to say something. And I'd like the council, let me do this, and I want the council to come down and get a picture too, if that's agreeable. Certainly. You got a smile?
I have a smile.
You want to come up here? Don't you worry about that. What you saying about that there? Get up here when you get good there. Will y'all come down? Let's get a picture. Melissa? And then you can talk, right? As long as you say nice things about the mayor.
Sure.
Controversial.
Don't you do that. That's why you're a manager.
All right, Melissa, y'all bounce it out more.
What do you want? Melissa?
Light's real bad.
One more minute. All right, four more in the bottom room. Right here.
Thank you. Well, again, I will start by just saying it's an honor. It's been an honor to be your city manager. And I will say it's nice. I wasn't gonna poke fun at the mayor, but it's nice to have a mayor that's coachable. He's come a long way in a couple of years. I no longer have to tell him when the tie is necessary. He reminds me he's going to get it, so I appreciate that. I will tell you, it's a very sad and happy time for me. You know, I hate to leave this community. I've got a lot of friends here. I really enjoy the job. There are a lot of great things going on. But I'm also excited in terms of going to a place that's familiar to me. My office in James City County will be 20 minutes from where my grandmother lived in Yorktown, Virginia, a piece of property we still own and a place that I'm very familiar with. So the opportunity came probably a year and a half or two years sooner than I wish it had, but I am excited to be going, and again, happy and sad at the same time. We have a great working relationship here with other elected officials. That doesn't always happen, and that's a testament to the mayor and council. You've sort of built those relationships, and it makes my job as your manager and as your staff a lot easier. We have a great group of dedicated employees. I think you know many of them. I know more of them, I think, in terms of interacting day to day. But you have a great staff of employees working to make the community better. That's a testament to them, and it's made my job as city manager much, much better. The unique relationship with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. When I came here, I knew the city and the county would cater to the air force. I never knew the air force gave so much back to the community. And the mayor harasses the CO at the base all the time, and they respond all the time. But the relationship there is really, really good. I've been told that I've accomplished a lot in the seven years I've been here, and that's not really true. I just happened to be your city manager during that time. Most of these things were gonna happen with or without me. But I have been honored to be a part of these things, and a number of them that I'd like to mention is an increase in fund balance and an increase in your bond rating. You have a great finance department and director, but that increase in your savings hadn't happened by itself. It's taken her telling me and us convincing you that that was important, and the increase in bond rating is good. The Maxwell Convention Center, although County Projects are a great accomplishment that many of us have been involved in. The Goldsboro Events Center, the Bryan Multi-Sports Complex. The F-86 aircraft, probably one of my favorite projects, is that airplane going down the Ash Street at 2:00 in the morning to make sure it would fit, and it did, and then bringing it back during the daytime when it was refurbished by the air force to put it up there at Center and Ash. The destruction of the bus station. Our bus transfer station was pitiful. It really was bad for those that needed it, and there were citizens that needed it. They have a much better place to be today. Improvements in our parks citywide. Our Parks and Recreation Department has done a great job of that. Multiple water and sewer projects that most of the citizens aren't aware of, but have really taken their money to make our services' capacity and availability better. The creation of a stormwater fee that will make stormwater drainage system better in Goldsboro. It's sowing dividends, more to come in the future, but that has been something that took some effort to get there. Improvement in our vehicle fleet, the opening of our new WA Foster, the renovation of the old WA Foster. And I will tell you, Goldsboro's downtown is the envy of many. And again, it is a tough thing to say. It's great, but people across the state continue to talk about our downtown and wonder how you did it. So again, those are things that really will stick with me. I've just been the manager during those times. You know, I will thank my family. As all of us in these kind of offices or these positions know, your family has to be supportive. They sit back in silence while we, as public officials, are criticized, sometimes rightly, sometimes wrongly, but they, as our family, normally have... We tell them to be quiet and stay out of it, because that's what they have to do. And for kids, that's hard. And I've always taught with my boys, who are now 17 and 20, to not believe everything they read or hear about their dad, because some of it's true and some of it's not, but just to keep them out of it. But I do want to thank all of my family for their support. I will tell you, I have full confidence in Randy Guthrie as your interim manager. He has this city's heart and soul. He will look after the community, and he will run it well until you find a permanent replacement. And I'll always keep Goldsboro in my heart and hope for more and better things for everybody throughout the community. It really is a great place, and as I said in the beginning, it's been an honor to be your manager. And if I can help anyone at any time, please don't hesitate to give me a call. So thank you. Thank you, Doug.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have public comment period. Anybody from the audience who would like to speak for up to three minutes on any items concerning the city? Would anybody like to speak? Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, city council, and good evening to the city of Goldsboro. I stand before you today because in the past, I was in the air force, and one of the core values is service before self, which is something that I truly believe in. However, I do not believe in service before the ones that you love. And I am guilty of putting my service to the city of Goldsboro before the people that I love. And therefore, I would like to make a public announcement stating that tomorrow will be my last historic district commission meeting. That is all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak from the audience? Anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. I don't know if I did this one in a firm.
No, you just can talk.
I'm Lucette Vaughn. My councilman is Mark Steed. Good evening.
Good evening.
To your mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
And to all of the councilmen, and to everybody that's here today. I'm a concerned citizen, very, very concerned. This activity was taking, going on next door to me, and I began to inquire and finding out it's gonna be a group home, which was once a daycare. And it's moving right next door to me. I didn't know about it. My neighbors wasn't notified, nor was I. I'm not here to bash anybody. I have no problem with special need, because I have a special need sister. But in your ordinance, you got it spaced out. It can't be so close together. But it seemed like it's all right for it to come and stay right next door to me, less than 50 feet. And I feel like that's too close. Concerned about myself, retiring a widower, the majority of the community are seniors. Even about the clients going across to the park, they're concerned. Or if they come on my property, I'm liable for anything that would happen to them. Like I say, I'm concerned about safety and about it being too close to me. And I'm also concerned by it could be valued by property. In the event, I want to sell it. So I'm just making you aware of this. I've been on this property, in that house, my husband and I, before he deceased, for 28 and a half years, and I'm still there and I'm very, very concerned about it, and I'd like your consideration about it.
Ma'am, can you do me one particular... Do you know the address?
105 Neal Street.
So that our planning folks-
105 Neal Street.
She... Jennifer's heard you. Look, this is the first I think any of us have heard about this. So let us just check it out, be sure everything's proper, and if... where it is, but we'll definitely do that. And if you'll give Melissa your phone number, where we can make contact with you, we'll check all this out and see where it is, okay? We can at least do that. Did you get that address?
Yeah, I've heard. I've heard about it.
Oh, okay.
So I do know about it.
Okay.
I don't think they're in compliance yet.
So ma'am, in the next couple of days, some... One of us, one of... Somebody will be calling you back, and let us just check it, and we'll see what we come up with, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Larry Reed. I reside two, three doors down from that group home.
Okay.
My concern is, well, one thing, I won't notify when they done all this. And I-
Can I have a minute? Let me ask something, because I'm not clear. And is some... Are you're saying the group home is operational today already?
Yeah.
Is that what we're...
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Just want to be sure what we're understanding. Okay.
And I won't notify, and I know none of my other citizens in there will notify. Just like you said, there's a lot of elderly people in that community, and they stay by themselves. My concern is, is me... See, I used to work for the state of North Carolina, Chawasburg. And I used to work for that kind of city. And I know that the client's supposed to be supervised at all times. And I have been watching this group home. And I've been seeing the clients out in that port, walking by themselves. Nobody, nobody is around. And I know, I work for the state of North Carolina, that this not... This ain't supposed to happen. They could get hurt, could hurt somebody else. Or, because like I said, one off of your, on your property, and if they get hurt, you're liable. But my concern is, I won't notify, then nobody notify, nobody in that neighborhood. And I don't know how y'all, how y'all do this, but I think really that if this don't happen to us, we should have been told that this was gonna happen. How I found out, how I found out, it happened about a month or two ago. How I found out, I saw a moving van down there. And I said, he must, the person must be moving. And then next day I know, I saw a lot of strange people walking around. So I said, well, it's something going on. And I found out that this is what it was, it was just a group home there. He didn't talk to us, and nobody from the city talked to us. And that's a, that's a big concern of mine, and the safety of them clients that's walking around with no supervision.
And my only answer to you is, I think you've called us as off-guard as you were called off-guard. We don't, I think, know a lot about it either, and we don't even know that they've applied. We don't know they've been through the proper channels. We don't know any of that. But we will find out tomorrow, and then we will come back to you as a community and be sure that they've met all the checks and balance, and that everything's legit with it. And if it's not, then we'll be sure to do what we need to do to rectify that. But definitely, we'll be sure that they have followed all our ordinances.
Right. Thank you.
Okay? Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
And I just wanted to say thank you to the ones that came out last Friday for our International Overdose Awareness Day. We really appreciate your support.
Well, we appreciate what y'all doing. That's a big, big, big deal, and a lot of good partners there, so thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Anybody else? Sir? Yes, sir. Just one time, I'm gonna let you say something else.
There's concern, there's concern of something else.
Okay. You didn't use all your time, so that's why you're getting something else. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm originally from North End.
Right.
And I'm looking, I look at where I used to live in and see, North End is going down. It's really going down. You got new peoples in the neighborhood that don't nobody know nothing about it. Things are going on in North End that shouldn't be going on in North End. And the houses is looking miserable. But I see that the dying tides are looking good. I don't know how y'all allocate y'all money, but somebody should look into North End and some of these other sections. That, you know, if I was a business coming here, and I happened to go to them, that part of the section, I would want to turn around and go back out of town.
Sir, can I reiterate something?
Yes, sir.
Some of North End is my district, and I appreciate you saying that. I appreciate you observing. We have been doing some things there. We've been working, we've been paving streets there. We still have a lot of dirt roads that I've been pushing for us to pave. We're getting sidewalks in that area too, and we're hoping that we can get people to come in and want to purchase some of the houses that are dilapidated, you know, repair them, and so we can bring some life back there, because when I was a kid there, I grew up on North-
Oh, yeah.
And I grew up on John Street, and I remember it was life there. So it's something close to my heart, you know, so I'm glad you brought that up, and we are working on that.
Appreciate it.
Well, I think to reiterate what councilmembers, we talk a lot about North End and there. I think you'll see a lot more increased, increased activity in that, in that area, because it really could be, it's a beautiful area, and it really can be a beautiful area, again.
It could be. It could be. And I hope y'all work on getting it straightened out.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? All right, we're gonna close the public comment period and move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and councilor, your consent agenda consists of items C through M, which we had discussed with you earlier. Again, consent agenda, items C through M.
Move to adopt.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 All right, this consent agenda passes. Items requiring individual action, there are none. Mr. City Manager, this will be your last report. You got anything to report?
Not anything to add. It's just been an honor to be here. If I can ever help, finally, but thank you, mayor.
All right. Mayor and councilmember reports and comments. We'll start with Mr. Acop.
No comment.
Mr. Am.
Well, I had a long list of items here. I was gonna speak about city managers, but a lot of those have been covered already by the proclamation as well as his own words. But I just wanted to express my appreciation to Scott, the manner, the professional manner in which he's conducted himself through the time that I've known you. You've brought a credibility to the city, to the job, that I appreciate, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
I want to echo same sentiment. Scott, we always, like the mayor says, you A-type mind. We always get the chance to talk, and we're like, well, maybe that can happen. And I don't know about that, but we'll see. And I always love your humanity about caring for everybody, so I just wanted to say thank you, and I wish you the best of luck in Virginia and all your future endeavors. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rowway?
Scott, I want to thank you for your leadership. I want to thank you for your counsel, the way you have kept a lot of us in line the whole time I've been on this council. You've said, no, you can't say that again. You can't do that. And especially to the mayor, and sometimes to me, but you've been a great representative of the city, and not only in Raleigh, in Washington, and those places, and it's done well for the city. Thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you.
Captain Williams?
I had the opportunity to go to Dillon Middle School today, and I just want to thank all the men that came out for donuts for dads. It was wonderful seeing all the men that cared about our youth here. Got a chance to sit down with some, you know, they weren't all dads of those kids in that school, but they went there and they basically let the kids know, you can do more, and we care about what you're doing. So I want to thank all the dads that came and the dads that couldn't come. I know you probably wanted to be there. I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I got two or three things. First off, I want to talk about Scott. I don't know who's gonna get me dressed now, since Scott's leading, but I'll have to figure that out, not only who's gonna write my letters for me anymore, tell me what I should or shouldn't say, or when I'm going to talk to somebody, give me a list to do. But Randy, there's gonna be a lot for you to do. You got big shoes to follow, and I'm sure you've learned the word "maybe" as well. So we'll get to it. We'll do that. I do want to say, as everybody knows, schools got back into session, so please be careful riding around our city. A lot of kids out and about. Looks like everybody kind of got back very successful to school, so that's good. I do want to just take a minute and mention that the, our community cares and the Antioch Church did a back-to-school bash at the H.C. Brown Park. World Contracting did one here downtown. And then Steve Ashford did one at the Leslie Street Center along with the sorority and some churches. And between all of these, I bet there was probably a thousand book bags given to these kids, which is a big deal. And these kids, it's, I'm really, really pleased with the turnout. I'm really pleased with all these kids coming, and it's a great thing. I was really pleased to see the one at Leslie Street Center, because the council, the reason we did that was to be a community center. And Steve got a little bit ahead of us and went ahead. He's already opened his boxing over there, so he's already in the building, operating his boxing, and he went ahead and took over the building that day with all his help, and did a great job over there. It did my heart good to see that building. We've renovated the building. We'll have a grand open probably sometime in October for it. But just to see it full of kids and full of life, that's the reason we did that for that community. So I'm really happy to see that. We have a Center Street Jam this Thursday. Our DGDC Awards Dinner is, or Annual Dinner, I'm sorry, is next week. And really important, we also have Beat Week this weekend. It's about all week downtown, but the big stuff's on Saturday. I would encourage everybody to come out. There's a lot of festivities. There's a big band coming in on Saturday, and just a lot going on. So I certainly would encourage everybody to come out to Beat Week. To you folks on Neal Street, we will check on that. We will get back to you. Thank you for coming. I'm sorry you had to bring it to us this way, but we'll figure it out, and we'll do anything we can to help you, because certainly you ought to know if that's going on in your neighborhood. I agree.